To tonight's city council meeting, we'll start off with the committee of the whole. Each of you count, each of the council members should have the minutes from our January the 19th. Committee of the whole meeting, there any additions and corrections to those minutes?
May for approval.
All right, have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the minutes carry for the committee of the whole from January the 19th, 2021. West Pace Village Improvement District Board of Directors, Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, sir, we have two vacancies. One unexpired term begins immediately and ends September 15th, 2025. And for that vacancy, I would like to nominate Paul Brockwell.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second for Paul Brockwell. Any discussion?
I just have a question. What's the West Pace Village Improvement, what is it?
Connie, that's, that's the West Pace development that sits at Exit 51 and Shell Tumor Parkway and College Street. And the project infrastructure was constructed through what's called an improvement district that set forth in Alabama law, and that was done so in the 2009 and 2010 timeframe. And they issued bonds to, to build the infrastructure out there and pledge certain funds and other things to repay the bonds. The city has no role in this improvement district, other than by state law. The city was a conduit to allow this to happen. We keep all transactions at arm's length because the city has no fiscal responsibility there. And this district has to carry forth the business of the district by paying debt service on bonds and making other infrastructure decisions and so on. And that's also why the directors for this board are, don't have to even live in the state of Alabama, because we have no responsibility, other than the council appoints the board.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor of Mr. Paul Brockwell, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll affirm that later on the agenda. Ms. Whitten.
And then we also have another unexpired term, which begins immediately and ends September the 15th, 2026. And for that position, I nominate David Guy.
Second.
All right, have a motion in second for David Guy. Any comments or questions? Any known, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries and will approve Mr. Guy later on in the agenda. Questions on the agenda, the city manager, Ms. Crouch.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, something I'd like to bring up, it's not on this particular agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to consider, see if the council would like to add to the next committee of the whole a discussion about changing the format of our meetings to add a period that we can respond to citizen comments in the open forum. It'd be a, in addition to, to the agenda, it'd be a item number 12, I believe. Yeah, it would, well, item 12 is citizens' open forum. I'd like to add an item right after that, so that we could have an opportunity to respond to citizens' open comments, so that we don't just listen to them and then go away.
Are we precluded from commenting or engaging them during that timeframe?
I'm not, no, we're not precluded to, but oftentimes they ask questions and we don't provide any response. The one that's come up most recently is this issue about the prisons. They were asked, and you know, we told them at that time that the city had no role in that, had not been approached. But we also said that we would look into it, but we never got back to anybody about whatever the response was. That's just an example, but I just think we ought to have an opportunity for them to receive an answer. I think they have an expectation when they ask us this question, for us to at least provide something, rather than just say, thank you, let's move to adjournment.
Kelly, I'm, I'm certainly willing to consider this. What I don't want is to be put in a situation where our staff is not prepared to answer a question. And it creates a, I guess, a disappointment or a dilemma, where we can't give an answer because we're not ready to give an answer, because we're not prepared for the question that's going to be asked. So I think there's got to be finesse and understanding, if we were to move forward with this, that, that certainly it would be in everybody's best intentions and efforts to respond to the questions, but there could be real valid reasons why we cannot give a, a response that evening.
Yeah, I fully understand that. That's why I'd like to have a discussion with the council and see what they think is feasible and reasonable. And if people don't want to do that, we can move on. But just to get something on the next committee of the whole agenda, so that we can have an opportunity to discuss it, is all I'm asking for.
Sure. Megan, the next, obviously, the next city council meeting, we know, is chock full of some very significant decisions that the council will be considering that night in the agenda. Do you know what the committee of the whole might look like that night?
I'm not aware about, you know, anything there might be board and commission appointment, I'm not recalling, but we don't have anything else slated for that night. You do have a very robust agenda that evening, some of which you are, you have a study session to, to work on a couple of those items on Monday, February 8th. So that agenda is looking to be pretty heavy with agenda items, but that's the regular meeting and not that of the committee of the whole.
Sure.
Yeah, and if this is not convenient for the next one, just like to put that on the burner somewhere, so we can have an opportunity to discuss it at some point, whether that's appropriate.
The rest of the city council, before we would move forward with, with potentially setting a time for this, is there any other thoughts from the rest of the city council?
Well, I, I think, I, I kind of, I, well, not kind of, but I agree with Kelly. Even if we don't have an answer to what they may be asking that particular night, but maybe we can come back the next meeting. And for the record, at least it'll be in the record that an answer was given. So I'm all for a discussion as far as discussing the format of it.
Are we not doing that now?
No, really, I'm sorry, Brad, you're exactly right. I should have framed the question, is the council okay with moving forward with setting a time to have this discussion? Thank you for correcting that.
No, 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 I was just, I was, I was responding to Connie and Kelly. I thought we were doing that now, following up on things.
I don't, I don't think we do that in a formal basis, I think that's fair to say. This would certainly formalize that process, but you know, I haven't, this is, this is Megan's first night of being a city manager. Certainly, I don't, haven't had this discussion about how she views this kind of thing happening during a meeting. I think in fairness to her, we ought to have, give her a chance to consider this and contemplate what, what this would be, look like in the future, as she continues to lead us. And so my question to the council, are y'all okay with setting this on a committee of the whole in the near future? I do agree with Megan, the next meeting on February the 16th is going to be significant. We might, would want to wait till maybe the first meeting in March to have this committee, this meeting, discussion set on the committee of the whole. But I want to make sure that everybody on the council is good with this.
I think it would be, I think.
Go ahead, Tommy.
I'm fine with that, I think it'd be, give a, putting in the first one in March might give Kelly time to get with Megan and, and work something out, have a plan to go forward from there on out. So I, I certainly would not oppose at least discussing it at the committee of the whole.
Stephen, I think you were lit up and I, go ahead.
I was going to say something similar to, to Chief Dawson. I, I think everyone that has something they want to bring to the committee of the whole should be able to do that. So I'm, I'm in support of it, at least hearing him out.
Okay, all right. Anyone else like to add anything? If not, I'm, I'm detecting that we'll move forward with this. I'm going to recommend that we set this potentially for the committee of the whole, the first meeting in March, which that date, Ms. Crouch, is, I think it's the second, I'm not sure.
Should be March 2nd.
I think it's March the 2nd, okay? Kelly, you good with waiting, skipping a week, skipping a meeting on that?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Megan.
And, and I think Chief Dawson's got a good point. I think having discussion with the city manager in the, in the meantime is, is important as well. So we'll do that and set that for the committee of the whole on March the 2nd, okay? Any other questions on tonight's agenda? Okay, CNN, is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, committee of the whole is adjourned, it is 7:05, so we'll continue to press forward. Lacy, with the roll call.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Hovey.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. If you'd please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll also have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Under Mayor's Communications, tonight, we will start off with our Employee of the Month and our Service Awards video for the month of February.
We're proud tonight to introduce you to our February Employee of the Month and many other great employees here at the City of Auburn. This is Mayor Ron Anders, and I'm proud to introduce you to our February Employee of the Month. Today, I have a memorandum that was sent by Ms. Katrina Cook, the Director of Environmental Services, to Megan McGowan-Crouch, Assistant City Manager, and to Jim Bustin, our City Manager. I am pleased to nominate Willie Talbert, Crew Leader in the Environmental Services Department, Solid Waste Division, as our Employee of the Month. Willie began working with the city in 2002 as a collector. In 2008, he was promoted to Crew Leader. Willie is known as a quiet achiever. He is very humble, dependable, and thrives on teamwork and quality customer service. These attributes make him a great asset to the Environmental Services Department. Willie's leadership within the Solid Waste Division is best captioned with the word teamwork. Over the last several months, the Green Waste Division had their busiest and heaviest season with trash and bulky yard debris. Willie volunteered to assist with the collection of trash and bulky yard debris crews after he finished his solid waste collection duties. This added several hours to Willie's already long workday and included several Saturday workdays. Furthermore, Willie has had several customers write letters and emails of appreciation about his professionalism and dependable service. Most recently, he was acknowledged for noticing that a customer along his collection route was unable to get their cart to the curb due to a medical issue for collection. After noticing the situation, he immediately called it in to his supervisor and began servicing the customer as a backdoor subscriber. Willie takes pride in assisting customers with any issues and works with crews in the department to ensure that teamwork is placed at the forefront. Willie's quiet demeanor, positive attitude, and reliable service has had a positive effect within the department, bringing coworkers closer and building a more cohesive team. Willie's dedication to the city and his profession are apparent with his, the exceptional service that he delivers. Congratulations, Willie, thank you.
Certainly, thank you to all of our employees again, and congratulations on your recognition. And we're very proud of you. Congratulations, Willie Talbert, our Employee of the Month. In our committee of the whole tonight, the city council appointed Paul Brockwell and David Guy to the West Pace Village Improvement District, and we'll approve that formally here in just a minute. I have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Anna Hovey for being named the new president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And the chamber is such an important institution in our community, the way they support the business community and support our community in general. And Anna will do an outstanding job, and certainly congratulations to you too, Jay, for having an outstanding wife. And we look forward to working with her here in, in the near future. The vaccination clinic has just finished its second day. I'm very proud of the effort of our employees here. I'm very proud of the leadership that the City of Auburn and our employees are providing for this. We've made a great investment to make sure that we can get as many of our, many of our citizens vaccinated as quick as possible. And I'm just very thankful for everything that has gone on here. It has not happened without a few glitches. I believe there's been some software glitches, communication glitches. I know that East Alabama Medical Center is working as hard as they can to improve those and, and get all those straightened out. They did send us a release late this afternoon, right before the meeting started, that I'll forward to the council in a little while, that had some further updates and communications. But this is a great effort, and it's a big effort. And we've got a lot of volunteers in our community, they're given a time to go over there and help kind of move people around and bring order to this. And I'm just, I'm just very proud of our whole community and the way we've responded. Ms. Crouch, do you have any other further updates on what's my, what's going on out there?
No, as we talked with the council Friday, I think it's just important to note that almost every city department has put a lot of effort into this, and I think we're very committed to making this clinic happen. We're also, as the mayor indicated, deeply grateful the Auburn Chamber has stepped up as a, as a partner. Obviously, East Alabama Medical Center and City of Opelika are as well, a number of community organizations. But if you would like to go by and see what's going on there, I'd be happy if any of the council members want to reach out. If you've not been or you're not volunteering, but want to kind of understand what's going on, I'd be happy to, to take you over or meet you there, so you can see that it's a, it's a really, really nice clinic. They're, they're ramping up the number of vaccinations a day. And it's also very heartwarming to see how happy people are about getting a shot. So I think it's giving them hope and our employees are enjoying it. And I appreciate the city council indulging in some emergency provisions that we invoked in order to make the clinic happen as quickly as possible. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Megan. Also want to give a shout out to Elizabeth Kaufman from Auburn Parks and Rec for putting together the Polar Plunge, which supports Special Olympics. We're living in a unique year, there wasn't as many people out there as normal. But as of this morning, they have raised over $13,000 for Special Olympics, and I think that's awesome. And I just think everybody's time and effort to go out there and have some fun with the Polar Plunge. Any other council members that might have an announcement tonight?
Okay, on Friday, I know, and during the pack, I mean, you did talk about the clinic opening up and that it would be available, you know, to the city council. And when, when we'll call, we have about 10 minutes to get there. But Megan, I just want to tell you that you don't have to worry about me, because I'll be taking the vaccine on Thursday at 8:30 due to my job Tuskegee. So I will have to rush in 10 minutes to get that, from Tuskegee to Auburn.
Okay.
Good for you, Connie.
And I want to clarify, vaccines, per the state rollout, would be made available to city council members if they choose to take them, because they're considered essential. Without a quorum of the council, it is very hard for us to conduct business. So I just want to clarify for everyone who's watching and make, make sure that the council has not requested that they get ahead of others. This is a part of the rollout, and they are considered essential, and that would be why they would be eligible, as all city employees are.
Okay, any other council members with an announcement tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
It's already announced on the city website, but Ward 6 will be having a ward meeting on Wednesday, February 10th at 6:00 PM. If you would like to participate, you can register on the city website, and I look forward to seeing everybody. Thanks.
Yep, thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications. Abby, I'll see your picture here. How are you doing tonight?
Um, I'm doing well, I'm tired, voting day was today, so.
It's election day, right?
Yes, I got to the concourse at like 7:30 this morning and left at like 3:30, so, and it was cold. But happy to do it because I love Auburn SGA. So that brings me to my first announcement, which is that Campaign Week has been going on since last week, and today was voting day. So the polls closed 15 minutes ago, and the, and the, it was voting for major candidates. So President, VP, Treasurer, and then also Ms. Auburn, who serves as our official communicator for Auburn University and outside organizations. And those elections ended at 7:00, and announcements for the candidate winners are at 10:00 PM tonight on Zoom at aub, a-u-b dot i-e slash elections. So tonight at 10:01, we will have a new executive team, which is super exciting, and then cabinet terms. So me, other directors, end late February, but the new Director of City Relations won't begin until early April. So you all should talk to me for a little bit longer. And then also, for the month of February and Black History Month, Auburn University is creating a Black History Month event calendar, or they have. So through a multitude of campus events that are both online and in person, we as a family are celebrating Black History Month. So those include things like culinary events and music events, poetry, anything that has to do with black artists and all of that. So we're super pumped about that, very excited to enhance family in that way. And all of that can be found at diversity.aub.edu. And then finally, in-person classes are to resume on February 8th. So that means fully in-person, unless the class is more than, like if it's a 200-person lecture and everyone can't fit. And those are allowed to be online, but otherwise, every class is in-person. So the way that's working is classes are capped at 50 people. If your class is bigger than 50 people, it won't meet online. If it's smaller, or if it's 50 or smaller, or sorry, it won't meet in person. If it's 50 or smaller, it will be in person, and face coverings are required. And we're required to be six feet apart, so classes of 20 people are in our biggest lecture halls, because we are required to take those precautions to keep everybody in the Auburn family safe. So yeah, other than that, we don't have very much going on at the university, but yeah.
Okay, thank you, Abby, we appreciate you being with us. Okay, at this point in time, it's opportunity for citizens to communicate to the city council on items on tonight's agenda. Please remember, this is just on items on tonight's agenda. You have five minutes to speak, and please begin your, your comments by giving us your name and address for the record. Raise your hand, if you would, on the Zoom apparatus. Okay, so you know what, we'll move ahead, City Managers' Communications.
All right, Mayor, under City Managers' Communications this evening, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Commercial Development Authority. Terms begin March 16th, 2021, and end March 15th, 2025. Appointments will be made at the March 2nd meeting. If you're ready for the consent agenda.
We'll move ahead, yes.
All right, we will proceed to the consent agenda. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Manager, I'd like to remove item 8E8 ECHO.
Okay, 8E. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay. Ms. Crouch will start with 8E.
Item 8E is naming a meeting room in the Engineering Services Building in honor of former and recently retired city manager Jim Bustin. The room will be named the James C. Bustin III Education and Meeting Center.
May for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As y'all know, I previously expressed my desire that we implement some kind of a policy for naming city property after individuals. And in the absence of such a policy, I must object to this resolution.
Any other comments from the council?
I'll just add that I tend to agree with that, however, I view that as something for politicians. I, I think someone that has worked for the city, that's been an employee, that has done a good job, I, I think that is fair. I, I just, I personally have a thing against naming things after politicians, but someone that has worked hard as an employee, I, I, I recommend that we do this.
Connie, I believe you, you had, you were going to say something?
Okay, um, I guess, I, I got several questions. Now, um, so this is, this has already been approved, and you just already have done a resolution for this. And also, I just wanted to understand, when we're talking about a meeting room, now, do we have other meeting rooms that's named after people throughout the city, or? Oh, so how did we just, why did we just choose this particular meeting room? And, and I'm sort of kind of like with Kelly, we need some kind of procedure in place if we're gonna name rooms and that type of stuff after people. That's a personal against Jim Bustin, I want, I want that to be understood. But I just have a problem with just, you know, just taking a room and naming it after someone. And so I, I kind of object to this, uh, item 8E.
We are voting on this tonight, so there has been a resolution that has been built, but it's so we can consider it and vote on it tonight. So nothing has been confirmed. Megan, I don't believe that we have another room in the city that's been named for someone, you can correct me on that?
Not that I'm aware of, there have been buildings, so the complex this room sits in is for our first city manager, the Douglas J. Watson Municipal Complex, of which the council, that was something the council at that time wanted to do. And it's, it's varied from council to council. The, the goal with the room was that several council members had an interest in doing something. I was asked for an opinion of the staff on it, and I gave that opinion that Jim's legacy, and one of his biggest legacies for the city, is he's about employees, and he's about education of our employees and advancing ourselves. So the goal was, this is a room that used to be a, a meeting room and what was our library at one point, then it morphed into a public safety training room. And we just tend to call rooms, the public safety meeting room, the city hall meeting room, the, you know, whichever. But this was to signal that Jim's contributions and things that were important to him. It's, it's about this space, this space is currently being renovated, and that's one of the reasons it was selected, was to signal those things. People will likely just call it the Bustin Meeting Room, if you so choose to name it, but that's kind of how we, how we got to here. In my tenure as a staff member, as I previously indicated, the council has, different councils have felt differently about that. By and large, we do have some facilities named for people, and we have some that are not named for people. And that's been at the pleasure of the council and circumstances. There have been some policies about bike paths and other things. You'll see Outwire Road and Out Highway 14 that they're named for specific people, and, and those were heavily discussed at the time. But we don't, don't have anything formal right now in the books. And typically, that's running with facilities, not, not rooms.
You know, the council have a comment or question?
Well, I would just like to add that I think this is our process. You bring an item before the council, we deliberate, we have, and then we vote. So, you know, certainly, it's within each council member's right to vote how they feel best represents their constituents. So as far as objecting because there's not a process, this is the process. So for that reason, I think that's kind of self-explanatory. I would like to say that I think this is a great tribute to Jim's tenure with the city. And it, and it didn't dawn on me until Megan just stated this, that it's in the same complex named after a former city manager. So it kind of is fitting that, to me, that we would honor another retired city manager in the same complex for a meeting space that would go forth with his legacy of wanting to train employees and also opening up to the citizenry to use for meetings that we may hold in the future. So I, I fully support it, and I think it's a great tribute to the legacy that, and the tenure that Jim has left on this, on his mark for the City of Auburn.
Anyone else?
Well, okay. Well, okay, so you said we have voted on it. So do we, when we get ready to vote, aren't we voting on the entire consent agenda?
No.
On this part of the?
No, we're not, Connie. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Kelly asked for this to be removed from the consent agenda, so we're handling this individually.
Okay.
So we'll vote on this individually. Anyone else? I think this is most appropriate to honor Jim by naming this room that a lot of the training for our future employees is going to be conducted in. This is a single room. I understand the potential of having a conversation about some kind of policy, but I tend to agree with Beth. We're debating that and deliberating that right now. This does not happen often. And Jim has put 25 years in here in the city for as a city manager. I have no reservation about naming a room that will be utilized for training employees in the future, the James Bustin Room. But I'm certainly willing to have further conversation about this moving forward. But as of tonight, I believe this is a great honor for a man who gave us 25 good years at City of Auburn. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Do I have a motion for the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to second for the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries.
Right, Mayor, under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 is authorizing the installation of three stop signs in Camden West Subdivision Phase 1. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here none, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. Any questions from the council? If not, is there a motion to approve? Have a motion to second. Lindsey with the roll call.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Right, Mayor, item 9A2 is authorizing the installation of one-stop sign in Farmville Lake Subdivision Phase 5A. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here none, Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. Any comments or questions from the council?
May for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Lindsey with the roll call vote.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, item 9A3 is authorizing the installation of one-stop sign and 125 mile-per-hour sign in the Coolest Young Subdivision. Unanimous consent is once again necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
All right, a second.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion to second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here none, Lindsey?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. Any comments or questions to the council? Do you have a motion to approve? Have a motion to second. Lindsey with the roll call.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, last one. Item 9A4 is authorizing the installation of three stop signs in the Preserve Phase 5B. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, have a motion to second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here none, Lindsey?
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes. Any comments or questions to the council? Here none, is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Lindsey with the roll call.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, under resolutions, this evening, we have one item. It's item 10A. It's a request by John D. Skipper on behalf of Mova A. Beignet Company of Auburn LLC for an outdoor cafe permit for property located at 155 North College Street. A public hearing is required.
Moved to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please give your name and address for the record and raise your hand on your Zoom. Okay, all right. Susan Bolt?
Is this strictly on this item or any item?
It's strictly on this item.
Okay, then I put my hand down, sorry.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to second. Is there any questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
Hey, Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. You can address the city council about anything. You have three minutes. And please begin by giving your name and address for the record. Ms. Bolt, I believe this might be your time to talk. We'll go ahead and call on you and let you start, okay? Susan Bolt?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Susan Bolt, East University Drive in Auburn. I've talked to several of y'all before about a concern about the short-term rental consideration that's coming up. And currently, it excludes the NC zones. And I just wanted to ask that the city council reconsider and open it up to every zone in the city. I know that at one of the planning commission meetings, the question was asked, why the neighborhood conservation designation, or how they arrived at neighborhood conservation, what was the purpose of that? And one of the reasons that was given by one of the planning commission members was that it was to limit the density in that zone. And my comment there is, the density is determined by the number of houses. So whether you allow short-term rentals in the NC zone has little to no bearing on the density in that zone. So I just wanted to bring that point up and ask that the city council not exclude any zones in the city for short-term rentals. And that to do short-term rentals in whatever zone is a like use. It's not doing something different like mechanics, you know, establishment. It is a like use, just like you're living in your home. So the other point I wanted to make is, is short-term rentals is the market solving a problem that is not currently being met. And short-term rentals has been instrumental in doing just that. So again, I hope that the council will not exclude the NC zones on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, my name is Josh Poole. I live at 334 Hickory Woods Drive. And I'm also chiming in to make a comment about short-term rentals and express my full support for them in all of Auburn. My wife and I have lived here since 2012, and we just recently bought our first home. And one of the reasons for buying the house that we did was that it had plenty of room to share with our friends and family, but also to rent out for short-term rentals. And I think we're right on the edge of a zone, but I'm pretty sure we're in a zone that allows it. But I still think it should be allowed everywhere in town. My wife and I, we enjoy hosting and meeting new people from all over the world. And we've met people from all over the world through services like VRBO and Airbnb. And I just think this is a fantastic opportunity for the city. Airbnb is already here. They've been here for a while. And from my understanding, there's been only a handful of problematic instances. And so just for me staying from all over the world, all the United States and Europe, I think there's like this fear or stigma around short-term rentals. And I think it's unwarranted. And I think it's from a fundamental lack of understanding on how they operate. Everyone I've ever stayed in, and I can think of, was individually owned, and most of them being the owners' primary residence. And in my opinion, this isn't hoteling anyone's neighborhood. And from my understanding, there's, I just don't think there's been that much of a problem. They've already been here. And if, I think there's a fear that investors are going to gobble up properties. But if that was a lucrative enough market, I think that would have already happened. A friend mentioned to me that most NC zones are the highest in demand due to proximity to campus. And I think the problems that I've heard from are things like noise, traffic, trash. But we already have ordinances to address all these issues. And so I think like a strike system would work. You have a license suspension, and I think it would fix all, most of the problems that I think people fear would come from Airbnbs. Because most people that are hosting Airbnbs, it's mainly you're hosting like friends and family, maybe a visiting professor or grad student, or someone's here on a seminar. Like it's small scale. And most rentals already have rules where you can't have so many people, you can't have parties. It's their residents, and they're taking pride in it.